Good evening and welcome to the December 14th, 2020 Sherburne School Committee Meeting, which we're conducting remotely via Zoom in accordance with Governor Baker's Order on Open Meeting Law Changes where we can meet remotely. The Zoom meeting was posted online prior to our meeting, so anyone may join. The same rules apply as far as community comments and being recognized. And just to move it smoothly, if you'll mute yourself if you're not speaking, so that we can make sure that we contain some of the noise background. Otherwise, first we'll start with the community comments. This is a nice, small group. I don't see any community comments. So we'll move on to the Principal's Report and Dr. Brown.
Well, good evening, everyone. My report this month is very short and sweet. Dynamic learning is happening every day at school, but with the reduction in field trips, in enrichment programs, and professional development, I feel like there's much, much less to report on. A couple of things that I wanted to lift for your information this month. The rollout of Phase Three a week ago went very well. We keep, it's a little bit like that movie Groundhog's Day. We keep tweaking the schedule and we get everything organized and then we make adjustments. But we are, you know, the teachers, needless to say, knock themselves out to make sure that we're prepared for the fourth and fifth graders. We moved a few classrooms around where class sizes, to make sure that classes that had larger class sizes have extra square footage. And a shout out to Nicole Dara in fifth grade, who is our pioneer. She's teaching in the library for the rest of the year. So she was a real trooper and that allowed us to maintain double suites for the other fifth grades, where the class sizes were just a smidge bigger than, than the other grade levels. Our specialists and our special education staff are all in full time now, as are all of our students. And, you know, obviously with the exception of Wednesdays, which continue to be remote. And the, the energy on the Hill is, is amazing. The camaraderie with students and faculty. Some of us, some of our faculty members haven't seen each other face to face since September. So there, there really is a homey feeling and obviously we're, you know, we're being very careful with the guidelines. Our children are eating in smaller groups. They're playing in smaller groups. And earlier today, we were having a meeting about social emotional learning. And it occurred to me, our, our discipline incidence at Pine Hill, albeit never high, but they're, they're lower than ever this year. And that has to, that has, there's something special in me, the community attention that our children are getting and playing and learning in smaller ratios. There's, there's some magic sauce in that. Because of course, you know, with all of the stress that everyone is navigating around the pandemic at home and in, on the, on the educational front, our, our children overall are, are extra shiny and bright. So it's, it's really, it really, it really is special during, during a time when you'd think things would be more strained. The, the energy is super duper positive. Clearly I'm babbling and I apologize. So the rollout of Phase Three went very well. I also wanted to illuminate, and I hope I'm not stepping on anything that you're reporting on, Beth, our teacher workshop day, now two weeks ago, November 30th, was a really dynamic day at Pine Hill. And we, we focused on social justice and the themes that are put forth in the Teaching Tolerance Standards. I shared the link for you in case you weren't familiar with them. We looked at English Language Arts and Social Studies especially, although everybody looked from their PE perspective, or their Spanish language perspective, or their art perspective, or, you know, whatever content folks, folks are teaching, to make sure that we are being as creative as possible to assure that the, the learning outcomes are embedded in the bigger picture themes and projects that, that our students are doing. So it was a particularly rich and important curricular area for, for teams to spend time looking in. And, and it was a very productive day. I wanted to make sure I did a shout out to New England Coffee, who sent us a truck that you would have thought we were giving out Willy Wonka bars, a coffee truck, in a group full of teachers was, 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 was pretty special. And our CSA provided lunch in that, lunch in that day, which, which was really special as well. So thank you for that. You can see we're continuing to coach our new teachers. In addition to the literacy specialist, Jen Ryan, who's working really hard with the larger than average cohort of new educators we have this year. Teachers College continues to be coaching our new teachers in the Readers and Writers Workshop structure. And Julie Marr, our behaviorist is, was recently trained. There's a requirement for an annual training with the Safety Care Program that we use when, to assure that we're responding to children who might have emotional or behavioral dysregulation. And Julie, in turn, trains our staff members. So some of that happened on November 30th as well. So great energy on the Hill. This Friday is National Ugly Sweater Day. So if you're, if you're around Central Office friends, feel free to join in. And that's, that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Dr. Brown, you're talking about the energy of the kids and how, you know, shiny and bright they are. And I think that they're so grateful to be able to be personally in school. I mean, I was driving my masked carpool with my neighbors the other day with the windows cracked open, of course. And it was the first day that they were going back to school as, because they fit, they're fourth graders this year. And I'm going back for their third day of the week. And I asked them how it felt to be going to school, you know, four days instead of two. And they were like, oh, my gosh, it's so much better. It's so much better. So I think they're just all really, really happy to be there. And I know it's a lot of work for everybody in that building. So thank you.
I agree. The children, the children, there's truly a joyous energy.
We had a, if I could, Angie, we had an interesting conversation before people got on with Marlene, who is obviously here tonight, about what it's like from the teacher's perspective to have the kids back four days. And I was mentioning that in the conversations I've had with teachers, almost every single one of them that I can think of said the same thing, which is that it's great to have the kids back, but it's actually, it feels better to be doing this because I guess it's a lot of work to try and prepare for remote learning and in-person instruction. And when you can stick to one or the other, it's, it's a little, a little better. And I don't know if you'd add anything to that, Marlene. I don't think I did a very good job of explaining that, but the feedback's been really positive.
And, and that's basically what it was. I had commented that it's like working two full-time jobs, when we had to plan for remote within the two days that we were in the building. So on a Thursday, Friday, when I was there, I'm teaching Thursday, Friday, but I'm also thinking ahead three days. And it usually encompassed the weekend. So it was a lot of work and most teachers would say it felt like you were doing two full-time jobs. But on a side note, may I add that I asked my kids last week during Zoom, how they felt about being home on Wednesday, because we're still doing Zoom on Wednesdays. The question was in reference to, do you like coming in for two days and then hanging out at home for one day? I have 19 kids. All 19 would much prefer to be in the classroom on Wednesday to make it a complete week. And I just found that interesting, because I thought for sure there might be some kids that are like, you know, they like hanging out at home in the middle of the week, or the pajamas, or the eating breakfast, or staying at, whatever it might be. All 19 would much prefer to be in the classroom. So I think they're very happy being back. And I think your faculty is very happy being back in whatever circumstances and protocols that have to be. We're all making it work. And I think we're all feeling a little better for every step closer to normalcy that we can get to.
Thanks, Marlene. I, I think you're absolutely right. And it's interesting with the kids because I, I think this generation, especially of the younger kids, will never say, I hate school again, because they would much rather be in, much, much rather. They've had plenty of time off. In fact, I'm not sure that all kids are looking forward to the, the winter break coming up, because they've had so much time. And I think more than anything, I had a conversation with kids on the high school TV show this afternoon or this morning. And, and they said the same thing. We just like being with our friends. We don't see our friends. And so, great, great news. Good feedback.
Well, thank you, Dr. Brown, and thank you to all the staff at Pine Hill. And if anyone could do it, I have no doubt it's Pine Hill that would do this with flying colors and work together. So I really appreciate that. The warrant report is attached. There's nothing that's dynamic in there, right, Dawn?
I'll just point out, you'll notice, you'll see the funds, the CARES reopening and municipal CARES. I'm going to be talking about that in my monthly report. But again, that tells you what fund those amounts are being charged to. And so those are new for this year, right? Hopefully one and done. We'll see them this year and never again. But just to point that out, if you want to go back and, and see what funds we charged, at least dollar wise, you can see from your warrant report.
That sounds good. Yeah, hopefully we won't see this for another 100 years. And I don't think it'll be here. So that'll be fun. So the monthly financial report, do you want to report on that, Dawn?
Yes. So I'll just hit the highlights. So what I've been doing for the committees is trying to keep the running report so that I'm tweaking what is changed, but at least giving you sort of a carry forward. So I'll point out, one thing that we have changed since we met with you in October is that we had another post-budget staffing change with a retirement. So you'll see that the dollar value there in that first line item jumped from 100 to 150 because of that. So that was one change. And then I did add that we have been adding with all these different phases, additional educational assistance support. And so any educational assistant that we have added since the start of the school year, and more so with the Phase Two and Phase Three, at least until December 31st, or until December 23rd, when school ends, we can charge those salaries to your reopening grant. So I've made that indication to you too, that right now, they're not in your, in your general fund operating statements, because they're being charged to the CARES grant. But come January 1st, then we will have to put those, unless some extensions happen, we will be putting those couple that are added positions back into your general fund. So you'll have a more update on that when I report out to you in February. But I didn't want it to come as a surprise, that you were probably are going to see some additional educational assistant salaries come, come February. And then just keep in mind that some of this plays into your budget too. So this will be a good reference point for you when you're, when I'm talking about the budget to look and see what's going on in salaries. Because as I pointed out to you, the three retirements that will impact your budget, but some of the other things that are happening are this year only. And so won't impact your, your 22 budget, just your fiscal year 21 financial results. Just on the CARE, before I stop, I'll stop there. Anything on just the general financial statements? Any questions?
Or the CARES, because I don't think we did anything with the CARES.
Well, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the CARE. I'm gonna give you some update on the CARES. Okay. So on the CARES, I just wanted to give you some updates, because since we met last, I have been in discussions with the town, because as I've mentioned to you, the town of Sherburne also got some municipal CARES funding. So we were able to, once they settled and knew what funds they had available, we did come to agreement that they would cover all of your technology expenditures that we had for this year, which encompassed the educators HP Elite Books. So that was almost $45,000 that we took out of our CARES fund and they put into their CARES fund. And also, we had to purchase additional iPads for the students, so we could achieve that one-to-one for the K3. They also picked up that purchase of the iPads. In addition, they covered Sherburne's allocation for the engineering study that we did, along with all the air purifiers that we purchased for Pine Hill Elementary School in each of the classrooms. So in total, they, they took about $85,000 worth of expenses off of our bucks and put them onto their CARES funding. So I wanted to thank the town for that. That was huge for us, because there were a lot of expenses that I was having to put into the general fund, that once I got the technology out of your CARES fund, allowed us to put many more expenses that were definitely COVID-related into your grant. So I wanted to make sure that the school committee was aware of that and to thank the town when you see them. And on your CARES grant, then, just to give you a little scenario, because we were able to take out those expenses, I am picking up staffing expenses. So obviously the educational assistance. And then some of the, I think we're going to end up using some of it also for the additional teachers that we had to hire for the Remote Academy. So I'm still playing around with the numbers, but it also covered all the PD for the teachers this summer, the testing for the, the concierge service, testing at AFC. We also have additional software and the microphones, the cameras, and things that we had to purchase to sort of make remote teaching work well. Obviously PPE, the tent rental. So all those kind of expenses now are in your CARES grants. So that is, was much needed funding from the state, sort of that we didn't have to worry about making it the safest school that we could, and getting the staff that we needed. So we'll give you a full reporting. Obviously, the grant ends on December 30th. And so your February report will give you a full report on exactly how everything shook out.
Okay. So next we have the proposed fiscal year 22 operating budget. Do you want to address some of that?
I put together some slides just to walk us through. So let me do my share screen here.
Because I have it on my computer in two things, so that I could, I didn't want to print all these papers.
Yeah. So I didn't, I sort of did a high level review for this. So, and I'll walk through and let you know what you have in your detail. But obviously, this is our first version of the budget. You'll probably see two more versions before it's all said and done. But this is our starting point. And remember, this is our starting point. So we will have more work to do. But both, both towns request that the schools put forward by the end of the year, so before December 31st, at least a placeholder budget. So this is what this entails. So just to go over, and this was in your operating overview, but our assumptions were, we're assuming that we're going to be in regular school operations, that is in-person, five days a week with level enrollment. We worked in compliance with the town's budget guidance, which was an allocation of 2% on salaries, and then either a level funded or decreased budget. Obviously, we continue to align our budgets with our district strategic plan. And we have acute awareness of potential post-COVID-19 state budget financial constraints that could have an impact on Chapter 70 for the town, and also potentially circuit breaker reimbursement. So we always look at our budget in two pieces. So the in-district and the out-of-district. And they each have their own budget drivers. So for in-district, obviously, your payroll represents, represents 85 of their, 85% of your in-district operating budget. And the key budget drivers there are obviously your contractual agreements, which for fiscal year 22, across the board are approximately 2%. Again, in addition, those are in addition to the step and lane increases for our educators. You do have, as I just noted in your, in your monthly report, several staffing changes and retirements that are helping offset your salary increases. We're not bringing forward any new staffing positions for fiscal year 22 school operations. But remember, in June of last year, we approved the additional section for Grade Four that was covered through our revolving fund. We're now bringing that into the operating fund, because that section will stay next year. So although we're not adding any new staffing positions, there is an add to your general fund for that section. Obviously, enrollment is a huge budget driver. You have your projections in your budget book. Right now, we're currently at 396. And the projections, actually, one year and three year, I believe both landed on 406 this year. So that'll be our magic number. And then we continue to do trend budgeting for all other operating accounts. And basically what that means is, we look and see what the prior history of an account was. And if we're not spending it in full, we usually trend it, and the reverse can happen too. So for out-of-district, obviously, the biggest budget driver is placements. And right now, we're projecting nine out-of-district placements for fiscal year 22. You had 11 in fiscal year 21. And just looking back to fiscal year 20, you had 15. So we're continuing to decrease your out-of-district placements. We actually have no elementary placements for next year. And I think that is probably a result of the investment in special education programming that we've made over the last several years, that we're able to keep these students here in Sherburne at Pine Hill versus being outplaced. So I think that's an important point to make. And then just keep in mind, as we've seen a decrease in our out-of-district placements, we'll also see a correlating decrease in circuit breaker reimbursement. So we have to keep in mind, probably more for the town finance committee, is that, you know, when we used to use 300, say, $325,000 a circuit breaker, we're not going to have those kinds of funds as we continue to shrink, shrink our out-of-district placements.
Dawn, can I ask a quick question? How does, having no out-of-district placements for Pine Hill next year, how does that compare to, I guess, how does that compare to what our average has been in recent history? I'm just thinking about if there's a way to kind of quantify the outcome from the additional special ed support that we've put in place.
Right. So you've, we've had probably, you haven't, you've always had a sort of a moderate number, like one to three. So it hasn't, it hasn't been heavy. But I think the key too is that there are students at Pine Hill who probably three or four years ago would have been placed out if we didn't have the program in place. So it's more of what, what probably could be placed out. Because if you remember, the goals program, when it was added, covered K, the younger grades, K2. And then there's the, the discussion about when, as those kids move up, those students, we may need to add a goals program too. Well, any students that are in the goals program now, most likely would have been out of district without the goals program in place.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
And that, that program will, ultimately, we expect that will carry right up into the region.
Correct.
And so if we were averaging one to three kids, that mean, that fall into the kind of ASD category, then those, those kids would, will probably likely still be coming and will need the program to stay in place. It's just that it depends on where they are. Right now, we have a pocket of kids in the K2, is it, Dawn? And, and, but we know that they're going to be aging up into what we think is really a different, we think there should be two age brackets, like the K3s or K2s, and then the 35s.
Right. And by requirement, you can't co-mingle the age, those complete age groups. So it sort of makes.
You know, on four years, you, you're not supposed to. So.
Okay.
So that's a work in progress, but that's a success story for our school system.
Absolutely. Definitely, definitely. So just looking at a quick overview of the financial statistics. So the overall fiscal year 22 operating budget increases just a little over one and a half percent, so about $100,000. Looking at it between in-district and out-of-district, you see that the in-district was down to really under 1%, but what really played into that was the retirement savings that you had from the, both post-budget and, actually, it's all post-budget, because we, we haven't taken into it account any potential retirements that we may have for fiscal year 22. So that 150,000, if you didn't have those particular retirements, you gotta, you need to add that to your $61,000, just to help you put that into perspective. So this isn't, you have, you have more than $61,000 of increases in your budget, but we just had some staffing changes that sort of offset those. And then for out-of-district, we're just seeing a small increase relative of, to out-of-district of 43,000. Put it into comparison, last year, you remember, we had a huge decrease, but it was all driven by your out-of-district placements going down by that 400,000. So when you look at the two different years, I'm just sort of pointing out that the drivers can fluctuate from year to year, as to what's making your budget turn out the way it is. So last year, as you can see, your in-district was $175,000 increase, but it was sort of buried by the huge decrease in out-of-district. So I just put together here. So here's your operating summary. This takes all the detailed line item sheets that you have detailed in your book by account, and sort of summarizes them by category. So there's your salaries and other compensation, where you can see that it's about 86% of your total in-district. Other educational expenditures are supplies, contracted services, all the things that we need to do to run the building, your transportation. Remember, we just negotiated our next five-year contract with three already approved. You're seeing a really small change, mainly because there was some added cushion in your fiscal year 21 budget, because what happened when we had our reserve for salaries and transportation, I had a little bit left in your reserve. So I put it into transportation, because in that softened year increase for this year, of the 296,000. And then our buildings and grounds are staying level funded at the 268,50. And then you can take a look at your tuition and your transportation for out-of-district. So there's your total budget in the first run of $7,101,569. So next up, so we will present any revisions that we have to date at your February 9th meeting. We have a scheduled meeting with Sherburne Advisory on February 24th. And then you'll do your final budget approval after your hearing on March 9th. So those are the dates on your calendar. Obviously, February 24th, the whole committee doesn't come, usually just Angie or the chair attends that one. Obviously, with Zoom, it's much easier if anyone would like to join in. But so your two more meetings, actually, both on the 9th, 29 and 39, for us to give you additional updates for any retirements that we know are finalized by February 1st, any more additional changes in out-of-district. We're continuing to look at some of the operating expenses. As far as curriculum and the software, there's a lot of new things that we're using this year. And so we're trying to figure out what makes sense to continue and what we particularly had only because of remote learning. So there are a few more things that we will be diving a little deeper into. But I think we have a pretty good starting point here. And then, so just remember that you have all the detail. Any questions that you have, if you want to send them to Angie, then we can address them for you at the February 9th meeting. Same with Advisory, Jane, anything you want to send to Angie, then we're happy to then report back out to your next meeting.
Thank you, Dawn. So anything else that you all, because that's, remember how we talked about how far in advance our budgets are done. So if there's anything that you can see, just like she said, send that along and we'll make sure we address it. As she said, really, enrollment is always our, our big issue to make sure that we've covered that. But it's amazing to me how spot on those projections are every year. It's, it's always something to me to see how they come true. So the next is the proposed fiscal year 22 capital.
So can I just stop? Because I do need you to approve the first draft of the budget, just so it can be formally submitted to the towns.
So do I have a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 22 operating budget as presented tonight?
So moved. Mike, it's Joe.
Thank you, Mike. And do I have a second?
Megan Page, second.
And this will be a quick roll call. And this will be a quick roll call, because there's just the three of us, since Amanda and Nancy aren't with us tonight. So Mike?
Mike Fitzgerald, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so let me share my screen again, because I just, it's probably easier to, um, bring up the capital. And it's short and sweet. Oops. Okay, so, um, there is only one thing on our for twenty-two. And that is to continue to do the casework replacement that we did this past summer. There, um, are, I go over here, the C wing classrooms, there are six in total that are original to the buildings. So basically, I don't know if you've been in the new classrooms that we have, um, that we did over the summer, but it's the whole cabinet, um, with the sink. So it, it's basically pulling that all out and replacing it. Um, and we do those at about five thousand dollars a classroom, so that's your thirty thousand, um, that we have on for the twenty-two uh, request. The rest of the years stay pretty similar. We did push out the one thing, if you compare to last year, we did push out the EMS upgrade replacement, and that's because basically, as far as capital goes, um, in all three districts, we've lost a year, um, with the COVID situation. So the EMS upgrade at the region, although was, was almost getting ready to go out for bid and get up and running, um, has been delayed. So until we get the region further along, we can't bring, um, Pine Hill and Chickering alone, along. So we pushed that off. And, but there is no concern at all, because the EMS, we actually just did a software upgrade at, uh, Pine Hill to help with the HVAC monitoring. And so it's in good shape and there's, there's no, uh, problem with, uh, pushing that off for another year. Um, obviously, the biggest item there is the rooftop at, uh, Pine Hill. Uh, we have engaged a, uh, building envelope consulting firm here at the region that we have been pleased with so far. You'll notice over here in the comments that we say we will be doing an assessment, um, in the, well, it's actually going to be in the spring of fiscal year twenty-one. What they do is they will come and they will do, um, uh, an actually sort of an examination of, um, your building, let you know, um, sort of if you have any life left, if you don't, if there are repairs that you can do to extend your life, but also give you your options for either a restoration or a complete replacement. Um, and it was, it's actually a pretty good report. So that is the jumping po- uh, point that we will have for Pine Hill come spring, and then we'll have a better idea, not only of, uh, when we should be doing it, but probably um, a more accurate placeholder as far as cost. The other little things that you see on there is because they're on the online, um, I'm sorry, on the onsite insight report, uh, we put them on, and then the summer or two before is when we do our research, um, so that we can figure out if it's something that needs to be addressed in that year, or if there's more life and then we can push it off. So I think the good news is, once we get past, um, taking care of the, um, the, the roof covering, the next year's like really low at Pine Hill as far as things that need to be done.
Question.
Yeah.
About, so the roof, um, I, I've been speaking with Gina, Gino and and Dorothea, so about, um, there's a grant that's out there and they're using it to help with Pine Hill, or he was applying for it. And, um, part of it was about solar and things like that to help maybe with some of our airflow issues as well, too. It may cover some air conditioning costs through that grant. So that would entail when the roof is done too, because it may have implications, maybe for some roof replacement, I don't know. So I don't know if you've spoken to him at all?
Yes, uh, yeah, we connected, um, because he needed to get some information from us for that. So, um, I met him over there with our electrician and probably now, I would say, six weeks ago. And so I know that he said that they're getting a grant to do some, uh, additional exploration of things that they can do. So yeah, no, I am in touch with them and we will coordinate that, you know, as we move along in this process.
And it would be nice if maybe, you know, some of that we could work together, because I know sustainability is something that Dr. Keough, you know, is championing. And so I'm, you know, I'm trying to be cognizant to whatever we could do at the elementary level to make sure that what we do doesn't get, you know, rolled back so that we can keep moving forward.
Right, right. So again, at the region, we have, um, we've, we've engaged, at least from a preliminary standpoint, with a sustainability, um, group that helps you coordinate your capital with sustainability projects. So we'll, um, I did, uh, let Gino know about that. And, um, uh, so it's, um, again, I feel like we're using the region as a, as the guinea pig to research these, and then we will, um, you know, move up, move along. Any great ideas that we come up with are solutions to the two independent, uh, uh, elementary schools.
Are there any other questions?
Just a question on the eight seventy-five, that estimate, is that based off of like a worst-case scenario? Is that a?
So that's based on onsite insight, they look at the square footage that we have and what they, at the time, what they projected square, the cost for, I think they did, um, uh, restoration. And so then they, and then they just put inflation, um, on that. So I've, I've found that the numbers, because we actually have, um, estimates for the region. If you can do restoration, our numbers were pretty on. Um, if you have to do complete replacement, that's an underestimated number.
Okay, so we'll know more once.
Yes, we'll know more in the spring.
And is that, so, so the cost for them to come out to assess it?
Is free.
That's, that's free, okay. I mean, it wasn't, it's in like fiscal year twenty-one budget or something, so.
No, it's, um, it's actually a really nice thing.
We'll take free when we can get it.
They become, they become the broker, right? So they give you, um, ideas and then you sort of coordinate through them and they become sort of your project manager. So that's what we're, that's what we're sort of exploring and, and working with, um, the particular firm right now to make sure that we have a sound relationship and then we'll expand out. So, um, they've already done the report for us for all the buildings at the region. We'll take that a little further down the road, and then if we're, um, content with how it all plays out, then that'll be the firm that we have go do both Chickering and Pine Hill this spring.
Angie? While I have this chance, while we're talking about capital, uh, I also have been in touch with Sean Colleen and Addie Mae Weiss at, um, DPW. And last town meeting, um, the town approved funding to do so, uh, engineering study on the access road. So you all know we're using the access road this year for the buses in order to kind of alleviate some of the traffic. So, uh, that's progressing. I, I haven't had a chance to talk to Sean in the past week or so, but, uh, I do believe that, uh, that still remains something that we would like to bring forward to the town uh, and get that done once and for all.
I, I agree. I think, I think the year has shown that, I mean, it's been a problem ongoing, but I think this year we've seen, um, with the increased traffic and as enrollments, you know, continually, we go up a few every year. It just doesn't seem to go down, that traffic was becoming an issue. So I think it's definitely needed.
And don't forget, we had the earlier start times this year. So, uh, between the early start times and, uh, the coronavirus, we have had a lot of, uh, traffic.
And I just think it makes sense to have it one way, it's just, it's too confusing, otherwise. It's a little out of control.
It's tricky with the carpool, I think people turning around and people are dropping off in different places and it just, it would be safer, I think.
I, I, I think, I think we're all, uh, I think we're all just praying that nothing happens, happens with the people U-turning in front of the building and dropping off in front of the building. It's just a scary, um, pattern. And so, uh, hoping, hoping to have more news for you in that regard in coming, uh, meetings.
Great.
So we need to vote on this as well, Dawn?
Um, yes, at least it's a, a starting point to pass something along to, um, Sherburne Capital.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, um, accept the proposed fiscal year twenty-two capital expenditures?
I'll make a motion, Mike Fitzgerald.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Megan Page, second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll, uh, roll call, Mike?
Mike Fitzgerald, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. So next on, I think you're on again to the vote to approve tuition for pre-K.
Right, so as you recall, we're trying to do this on an annual basis, so we keep, uh, pace with staff cost at least. And so we're bringing forward two rates that include a two percent, um, increase over fiscal year twenty-one rates. And this represents to the, if you remember last year, we changed to just the two options for pre-K. So there's a three-day full day and a five-day, um, rate. So those are the two rates that you see there.
Anybody have any question about the, uh, pre-K tuition? I know everybody tries to get into the pre-K, everybody loves it, so. So do I have a motion to accept or approve the, um, tuition for pre-K?
Megan Page, motion to accept as described.
And do I have a second?
Mike Fitzgerald.
Any discussion? Hearing none, um, we'll do a roll call, Mike?
Mike Fitzgerald, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Andrew Johnson, yes.
Typically, at this meeting, I'll just say, we have, and I, it might have been on one of your previous agendas, the non-resident tuition rate. The DESI though has not updated their per pupil expenditure. So once they do that, I'll bring that forward, it won't necessarily impact your budget building. But, uh, they, they still have, they still have the rates that we had from last year on their website. So, uh, once they get the next fiscal year up, then we will bring that forward to the committee, so.
Dawn, how many non-resident tuitions do we have usually? It's not very many, is it?
No, it's like one or two.
That's awesome.
But we've had at least one or two for every year. So, and, and because we don't necessarily know what's going to happen next year, we go, I think we're going to go ahead and just keep, um, on an annual basis of proving that's right so that you're set in case something does come up.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is the ACED recommendation fiscal year twenty-two.
Yes, um, so Barb may, uh, be able to speak to this better than I. She's, she, uh, and Deb Reinemann, uh, worked very hard on this, uh, particular item. Uh, essentially, uh, the ACED is the committee that reviews, um, any stipended positions that are part of Appendix C in the teacher's contract. Uh, obviously, when you consider all the after-school clubs and coaching up at the high school and even the middle school, that's where the bulk, uh, of those stipended positions lie. But we do have, uh, curriculum leader positions at, uh, Pine Hill and at Chickering. And, um, there's been discussion about how to use those positions, whether they should be content-based leaders, so leaders who are kind of the, um, the point people for conversations about science or point people for conversations about history. And Chickering has been shifting towards, uh, grade-level, um, uh, curriculum leaders, which they're referring to as, uh, professional learning committee leaders. This is all, uh, very good stuff. When our teachers are sitting down, talking about what's working and what isn't, and how to move ourselves forward, that's a, that's a good thing. And so, uh, Barb and Deb Reinemann got together and, uh, talked about a proposal that they think, uh, would really meet the needs of both schools in a similar way. And again, we're trying to stay on the same page between Chickering and Pine Hill. We're not trying to make Pine Hill Chickering or Chickering Pine Hill, but we do want to, uh, be in sync because our kids come together and we don't want them to have radically different experiences when they come up to the middle school and, uh, the region. So, uh, we're hoping that we can get approval for two more positions. Uh, again, we're calling them, uh, PLC leaders, uh, so we'd be going from four to six. The total cost would be twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy. Currently, we're paying fifteen thousand, so it's an increase of seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And, um, we're, we're hoping to, uh, have your support for this as we, uh, look to next year. And I don't see, is there anything you would add to that, Barb?
Yes, thank you, Andrew. The current model we have for teacher leadership in our building, we're feeling is a bit dated. And with the focus exclusively on, as, as Andrew mentioned, the four core content areas, we'd like to grow to grade-level leadership so that we can, uh, be more focused on a bigger picture, such as, uh, technology integration and social emotional learning and project-based learning and, um, helping to continue to move our elementary schools to, um, not be looking at curricula areas, areas in isolation, but to be, you know, far more thematic and integrated. So, um, the portrait of a graduate learning outcomes in mine, for example. Um, so, um, we think this will, uh, help us grow our instructional leadership at the building level, and it will also give teeth to the collaboration that we do with our sister school in Dover, um, to be able to get those folks together, um, to bring ideas and expected outcomes back to the respective grade levels will, um, i- i- it'll help us be more vital in all of that.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Brown? I, I don't, I think, you know, it's completely appropriate, so I agree. Do we need to vote on this as well, Dawn, or is this just, yeah, we do? So, um,
This amends, like, just so you know, this amends actual the contract.
Right, this goes through the contract. We're well aware of now, the contracts. So, um, and, and I think it is long overdue. It is, um, we were a little antiquated in, in what we were, you know, supplementing before. So do I have a, um, motion to approve the ACED recommendation FY twenty-two? Essentially, we're increasing, um, to two more leaders for the PLC. Do I have a motion for that?
Megan Page, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Mike Fitzgerald, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll poll for voting, Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
Mike?
Mike Fitzgerald, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. And thank you, Dr. Brown, for, um, working, because I know you've worked across the river, two schools together. So I do think it's great whenever we can be coordinated.
Been working very hard to align, to align our collaboration. It's, it's, um, been very positive for all of our educators.
I think it's good, because we all end up in the same place in the end.
So this is, this is your first budget adjustment, so this will be added to your next version of your budget, because this is not in the current budget that you're looking at tonight.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. So the next night thing that we have is the class size policy, and it's the first read. So, um, actually, Megan, you and Amanda were the ones that I can thank so much for doing this. And, um, before we read through it, there is one adjustment, I'm going to have Dawn speak to it and I'll speak to it as well. Um, but before we start, Megan, if you want to kind of explain sort of our rationale for this and kind of like how we got to this, because we've been talking about this probably, I mean, I think since you started, which was two years ago, wasn't it?
Yep, yep, this has been on the table for a while, and this is part of our effort to bring, um, you know, bring Pine Hill and Chickering into alignment. And as we're creating alignment for students without the district or throughout the district to try to ensure a more equitable, um, educational experience for all of our students. We felt that this was an area that we needed to, to pay attention to. And we've also seen an impact to test scores at Pine Hill and the higher grades that we have not seen at Chickering. So we feel that aligning these class sizes could, um, also support that.
I agree. So if we look, um, Dawn, do you want us, well, you don't have it on yours, do you?
I have it right here, Angie. I, I think what you guys had talked about, if I remember correctly, was that you were talking about going to a, uh, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Dawn, but my recollection is that you were talking about going from a seventeen to twenty-three.
Right, well, I think, I think actually it was eight, was it eighteen, it's whatever, what was our, our, what our starting point was through?
Yes, it was eighteen.
Yeah, and just get rid of the four or five, um, making K five the same and just getting rid of the four or five increased, um, sizes.
Our, our breakdown, you know, with the four or five, and, and Dawn and I have talked about this, is before, you know, your, your K through three learning, there, there weren't as many components, you know, that you introduced new in the four or five, but our learning has evolved and changed. And so there's a lot more going on, and so we kind of need the class sizes to still maintain the same. And I think it helps the parents to understand too, you know, that everyone's gonna, um, you know, kind of had the same across, because when we did that jump, I know it was just a few. Because when we did that jump, I know it was just a few people, but sometimes those few people, and then it, it's just, it, it just seemed bigger than it was. And especially given COVID, um, we've, with our smaller class sizes, fortunately, it's really worked out in our favor because we got to bring people in. Um, so it, it does.
That is the truth. I mean, that's really, really true. We, we would not have been able to do this if we had large classes. And we have neighbors who have not been able to bring their kids back to the same degree because, and they want to. And their community is pushing them hard to get those kids in for four days, but they can't pull it off because their class sizes are too big. So you're, you're absolutely right about that, Angie. It's been a huge benefit.
So the first read through, the way it goes is, and actually, we need to adjust it. So the, it's the first read through and I'll, I'll read it um. And I'll tell you how we're, we're changing it. So it is desirable to limit class size in most areas in relation to the subject taught type of student, physical plant, availability of staff and various support facilities and or techniques. Class size where practical should be held to a maximum of, and we used to have twenty-five. But what it needs to state, which it's, we, we stated it incorrectly here, that's my fault, um, should be twenty-three. So our max would be twenty-three. So that would align with our K through three. And so the number of students in kindergarten through grade five shall be in the range of, instead of as it's stated here, seventeen to twenty-two, it will be eighteen to twenty-three students per classroom. So that would be throughout. It just would be a consistent number from K through three and add in the four or five. So we would, we would adjust to eighteen to twenty-three. And obviously, that's not to say, you know, just for expectation purposes. Um, if we had just that one student over where it was twenty-four, um, you know, we, we wouldn't then make a whole new class and only have twelve kids because, you know, you have to be realistic. So this would all be within guidance and rationale and reasonability. So. But I think it would be what's best for, for our students. So. So that is our first read through and that's all we have to do for this tonight. So if there's any discussion or anybody that um wants to comment or say anything, um, feel free. If there's any, Dr. Brown.
Thanks for your hard work in getting this, Megan, to this uh, this place two years, two years in the making. So really appreciate it. And I'm sure the families and the kids will appreciate it, too.
Thanks, Mike. Well, there've been a lot of important things the past couple of years. So I'm glad we're finally getting around to this, too.
I think the families will be relieved. I think, I think it just gives consistency, too. And it does keep us all in line. So. All right. So that's all we have to do for the read through, right? And we'll do another read through our next one and then we can vote on it the next time. So two, two more meetings.
We just need to be sure that the uh, the other members who missed it tonight realize that that would be a, a, a voting night.
Right. And I, I will, I will tell them. Um, yeah, I think um, December and COVID is hitting people hard this year. I don't know. I think a lot of people have had, and, and I think the Monday thing threw some people. Um, so there's that. So in the final um thing that we need to do is the approval of the minutes from October thirteenth, twenty-twenty, which in dog years seems like forever ago. I think in COVID, every day seems like it lasts, you know, seventy-two hours or something. I don't know. My days seem to drag on and on. So did anyone have any adjustments that they saw or was it as accurate as you remember? In my older brain, it seemed accurate. So I saw nothing, but I don't know if I didn't read it carefully enough or I don't recollect. So if there are no edits in it, um, could I have a motion to approve the the consent agenda for the minutes of October thirteenth, twenty-twenty?
Megan Page, so moved.
Could I have a second?
Mike Fitzgerald, second.
Is there any um discussion? Hearing none, I'll poll for um a vote. Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
Mike?
Mike Fitzgerald, yes.
And Angie Johnson, um, yes. So I think, other than that, everything else in there is just communications for you to read when you have nothing else to do, which I'm sure is never in these days. And um, the items for the February ninth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, again, like I said, we'll still be discussing budget. Um, and everything like that. But other than that, we have nothing left unless there's anything anybody else has on the agenda.
I have something not on the agenda. It's just a question. Um, I, and I know we haven't really talked about this as a district yet, but with the potential for a snow day this week, I was wondering if we're thinking of sending a communication to parents, letting them know how we're going to be addressing that day so they can maybe do a little mental planning on their part, depending what their situations are at home.
Uh, yes, um, I think I actually have uh mentioned it, but maybe not. I thought I mentioned it at the joint school committee meeting previously, but if not, um, just the same, there clearly are questions about it. Uh, one of the things that's important is that whatever it is that we decide to do, we try to stay consistent with the area school systems because our teachers' kids are in school in those systems.
Yeah.
And uh, so uh, but the plan that uh we have been discussing uh is that if it's a snowstorm, that would be one that we would not hold school. Uh, but um mainly because of travel uh reasons, and we just don't want anyone uh out in, you know, slick conditions, then that would be a remote day. If there are widespread power outages, for example, this storm right now, as projected this evening, looks to be light fluffy snow. That's not power outage snow. And the winds would be out over the Cape, if at all. Uh, that the really, really super strong damaging winds, and they're even not even really predicting much of that. So this looks to be either in person or uh, or a remote day. And uh, yeah, I can, I can let people know uh that uh the, the problem is, is that everyone has an opinion on snow days. Everybody. And uh, I don't really I don't want to start this big giant controversy about, you know, how we'll handle this. Uh, that is the plan, though. That is what, uh, that's what uh we were discussing among the eighteen area superintendents that I connect with. And uh, two of them are not doing that, but that's because they're already remote because of uh high case counts. So uh, but as far as I can tell, everyone else who weighed in, uh, most recently, we're talking about uh, the same model. So yes, I'll put something home to people tomorrow on that.
I think that makes sense. I was more thinking about the storm later in the week. Um, I think that makes sense. And it's, you know, if there are significant power outages, obviously, you can't provide the opportunity for some kids to attend school and others not to attend school remotely. So that's, there's always that, um, you know, that fine line and it depends on towns around us, too.
Yeah. Well, we'll get something out. I think that the uh, the various schools have uh put some stuff out, but I'm not sure if it's gone out uni- universally. So I'll do that.
Thank you. Well, if there's nothing else, I move that we adjourn. And at seven-thirty, you all did a fantastic job. We kept it to one hour. So thank you all very much.